Five minutes, that's not too bad, top of time. But we have all nine candidates here, we're ready to get started. And my name is Steve Bisher from Tahoe Chamber. We have many of our Chamber teammates here to help support the event tonight. And we really want to thank all the folks here at the college, including Austin, our technical specialist. And I'm going to introduce our moderator. And again, thanks for coming out tonight. Because we have nine candidates and quite a few questions that both came in online and were given to us prior to this evening, we unfortunately can't take questions from the audience tonight. However, we have spoken with the candidates. And afterwards, when the event is over, if you want to approach and ask some of your questions to the candidate you wish to speak with, they've agreed to stay as long as they can. We'll clear out the main room here so we can clean up. And you can approach the candidates at that time. So we appreciate your understanding of that. So I want to introduce our moderator for the evening, Todd Poth. Thank you, Todd. We're here at the college. And so we have Malaney Heil, who is the president of the Student Senate here at the college. And she's going to ask a couple of questions that have come from the students. So we really appreciate that. Again, we appreciate the chance to be here at the college. I saw her birthday, Mason. I know there's some college people from many years here. And we really appreciate the chance to be at the college. And then our timekeeper over here was Severman. And so that's our program for this evening. Again, thank you all for coming and thank you for being part of the program this evening. I know we'll all be civil and we'll listen to what each of the candidates had to say. So I'm going to turn it over to Todd.
All right, thanks, Steve. So first, we do want to thank LTC, as Steve said. Obviously, it's Tahoe Chamber. Voters both online and here tonight for educating themselves. And of course, the candidates for putting themselves through this. I mean, it's got to be a lot of fun. You guys are looking for this all day, I'm sure. So I have explained the rules to the candidates. But I'll give a quick recap for the listeners online and people here in the boardroom. We're going to be asking the same question to all nine candidates. We're going to go down through the line. And there'll be different orders, no way it happens. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer the question. After every three questions, we will have an opportunity for clarification based on what's been said before, if a candidate wishes to clarify. At that point in time, I'll announce it. If a candidate wished to clarify something that's been said, raise your hand. We will write down who all wished to clarify, and then we will call on you to clarify. When you clarify, you will have 45 seconds to clarify. This is going to be a tight timeline, guys, and I'm not lying about it. So we'll get through it. The questions, I think, are very varied and fit with just about everything you'd expect to happen with the city council. We've got a lot of good contributions online, and we kind of consolidate them in. All right. So we're going to start off, and we're going to start off with new candidate Davis. You can start off as the main incumbent. Okay. And this is going to be a question for all the candidates. You may all listen, I will repeat it again if you wish. So for the incumbents, your question is, what do you consider your top two or three accomplishments over the past four years? And what would your top priorities be in the coming term? If you're a challenger coming in, not an incumbent, we would want to know, what have you done to prepare for the job? And what will your top priorities be if elected for the upcoming term?
Thank you, Todd, and welcome, everybody. Great turnout. Appreciate your participation and the rest of the candidates here. My top priorities always have been, over the years, has been economic development, our police and fire, fixing our roads, and recreation. Thank you.
Candidate, Dave.
Thank you. I think for accomplishments the last four years, I'm really proud of the economic development that we have seen in our community. I ran four years ago because I was, I said that our city was looking tired, faded, and old. I'm so happy to see the economic development. The city's been very involved in the economic developments going on. We were hoping for a billion dollars of economic development in five years, and we are at about 800 million. So that's one of the big things. I'm proud of our sustainability commitment that we've made and look forward to the goals for 2032 and 2040. I'm very proud of how we're working on our housing development right now for affordable workplace housing. We're starting to make some real progress. In the future, gosh, my future goals are long-term vision for public transit and housing. I want to see that recreation center built. I want to see an arts commission. I want to see our roads get sustainable funding. I'm looking forward to having our fire station open back up. And there are many, many. I want to see our economic community, the economy, continue to thrive as it has. So there are a lot of things going on. I want to continue to look at our VHRs and see what we can do in the future because I know this is a contentious topic. Thank you.
Candidate, Seth.
Thanks, Todd. I think the top accomplishments over the last four years lie in three different buckets. The first would be the recreation bucket. We successfully built the Bijou Bike Park. We built two new fields at the college. We laid the groundwork for a bike path from Bansickle Park all the way to the Y. We passed Measure P, which will build a brand-new recreation and swim center. The second bucket would be in redevelopment. Take a look around town. Zalanto's done. The Whole Foods project is done. The crossings at the Y has been renovated. We have a new climbing gym that looks beautiful. We've taken the old Ace Hardware store, we have a new brewery over there. And we've taken the old amusement park, and there's a new brewery over there. The third bucket would be in policy. While VHRs remain controversial, four years ago, VHRs were the wild west. There was very little law and order there. Now, after putting together an ordinance in conjunction with the current council, we have law and order in the VHR world. It may not be perfect, but think about where it was four years ago and look where it is now. Also on policy, cannabis. The voters decided through Pop 64, 65% of locals wanted cannabis to be legalized in town. A couple of weeks ago, we passed a new cannabis ordinance, and that was a big accomplishment. So that's another policy that we put forward. Going into the future, the big issues are housing, finding the money for streets, and continuing with the projects that we're working on right now, the rec center.
It'll be Al Cole. Candidate Cole will be next. Yeah, I'll repeat the question here because being a candidate, not an incumbent. What have you done to prepare for the job? And what would be your top priorities if elected in the upcoming term?
I spent 20 years on city council preparing for this job. I took two years off thinking I wouldn't come back again. I have two reasons for coming back. As much as they tout the accomplishments, most of those projects were planned long ago, and we're just finishing them. And I also feel that with the departure of our city manager and the departure of two city attorneys and our city clerk and a temporary city manager now in this council, I was trying to hire one as fast as I can. God forbid that the three of us would have any say in it. I do feel that we need leadership and we need... My biggest priority is fixing the roads. We had a ballot measure to raise quarter cent sales tax. It failed. I felt it failed because it wasn't planned correctly. I think that voters are still very uneasy about giving money to the city rather than to a district. I think we need to form a roads district that will be just in charge of paving and maintaining our roads. I feel there's not money in the budget, and I'd like to discuss this later. People think that we can carve out $2 or $3 million a year every year out of the budget we have. It's impossible. In five years, this budget's going to be upside down by $5 or $6 million. So my priority's roads, and my priority is bringing professionalism back to our city council.
Candidate Gregum. Oh, ready to begin? What have you done to prepare for the job? And what would be your top priorities if elected to the upcoming term?
You know, I was on the city council from 2008 to 2012. So I have actual hands-on experience with the council. But I've been engaged with our community.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Excuse me?
Your name?
Bruce Gregum.
Oh, Bruce, hello.
Hello.
Sorry, we'd like the audience to please restrain from talking.
Thank you.
Todd's time again, sorry, candidate Gregum.
I've been engaged with our community. I worked in support for Measure P that stopped the city from putting parking meters throughout our town. I've worked and supported and litigated over Measure, over the loop road issue. That I supported the initiative that wanted to place the loop road on the ballot. I've been involved in the VHR issue. I'm concerned about keeping our neighborhoods and character our neighborhoods for our neighbors. I've been involved in other affairs. I know where we are going. My objectives or priorities would be roads. We need to fix our roads. 30 seconds? We need to fix our roads. We need to work for workforce housing. We need to make sure our citizens are safe. Thank you.
Candidate Hess.
Yeah, good afternoon, and it's great to be here tonight with so many people in attendance. I decided to run for city council because of what I saw as a lack of unity in our council and a constant somewhat level of dysfunction of our city leadership. And I felt that there was a real opportunity to step up and really get engaged. And since I've done that to get prepared, I have really reviewed really about the last four years of budgets and trying to find where the cuts have happened and where the increases have happened and what the explanation really is. Because I think one of our, and really our biggest responsibility, is to manage the $42 million that we bring in revenue every year. And for me, those priorities in today's age would be landing first in fire because I think the fact that Fire Station 2 was shut in 2015 as we've had increasing revenues in the city, as we've watched the other departments increase by millions of dollars, but we cut the fire department straight in the center of our town for the last three years. So that would be my number one priority. Number two would be public works. I do believe there's ways to cut certain parts of the budget to increase public works. I think that we have to really get into the budget. And as council members, we should be directly involved on a committee level to review and finite the budget with finance department and not just be presented a budget and pass it, as we have, in my opinion, over the past three to four years. We've really allowed the finance department to direct the council where the money should be.
Candidate Wallace, do we repeat the question?
No, I'm fine. Hi, I'm Tamara Wallace. For the past two years especially, I have attended every single council meeting. That's what I've done to prepare. I have stayed involved. I have stayed on top of all of the issues. I have participated. I have read every packet, just as every single council member has read every packet. And so I know what's going on. I can, I believe, hit the ground running if I'm lucky enough to be elected. As far as my priorities, police, fire, and roads, and affordable housing. Those are the issues that the community wants to be a priority for this council. Safety services. We don't have the technology for our fire department to communicate from a five-story building to the ground. That's an issue. We don't have, when a police officer is out of his vehicle, he can't communicate with base. That's an issue. We need technology. We need more police on the roads. And we need roads that we can drive on that are safe. So police, fire, and roads, and affordable housing. Thank you.
Candidate Middlebrook.
Yes. Hello, my name is Devin Middlebrook. And to answer Todd's first question, what have I done to prepare for my campaign? Since being lucky enough to move back to Tahoe five years after being born and raised in this community, I've worked my day job at the Tahoe Regional Young, uh, sorry. Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, too many acronyms in this town, where I manage our sustainability program. And my day job is learning and understanding the ins and outs and intricacies of Tahoe's complex government. My volunteer day job is executive director of the Tahoe Regional Young Professionals, where we've built a community of the next generation of leaders, where the Tahoe Chambers 40 Under Forty Program, I think two-thirds of the nominees in that program have been TRIP members, board members, current, past, and present. But why am I running? I'm running because we need new ideas and new leadership and new diversity to our city council. We shouldn't be thinking in two- and four-year increments. We should be thinking for the long-term future of our community. We're at a critical point where we really need to decide as a community what we want to become and what we want to do. We need housing and jobs for people to be able to work here, live here, play here. We need to diversify our economy through technology, innovation, outdoor recreation, healthcare services. We need people and leaders at the city council that aren't going to hinder the great things our community are doing, but support and back them up. And that is why I'm running for city council.
Thank you. Candidate Jared. Once again, what have you done to prepare for the job? And what are your top priorities if elected?
Thank you. I'm Patrick Jarrett. I'm running for city council. What I have done to prepare for this job? I've attended several city council meetings. I've also watched the meetings online. The mayor has done a fabulous job with her Let's Have a Conversation series. I've attended every single one of those. And it's a good step towards reaching out to the community. As far as my priorities, I'm on the front lines of this every day. Those of you that know me, those of you that don't, I should say. I work at Scotty's Hardware. That's my day job. So I am on the front lines every day dealing with all sides of this, of issues, be it VHRs or streets. I'm hearing all those complaints from people. They say, "You should get on the council. You need to do something about the streets. We need to do something about the VHRs." But on the other side of that, I also have the VHR owners and the property managers and the people that maintain and clean those places. So I'm seeing this from all sides. I take a look, any problem that I deal with, I have to take a look at it from all sides. I cannot make a decision without seeing all the facts. But with having, being on the council, we need a council that's trusting and some new faces and some new ideas, and a council that can get along with each other and get things done. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to the next topic. Candidate Jared, you'll be first up. So we're going to go with something really light on this one. We're going to go with VHRs and Measure T. Obviously, Measure T is on the ballot. So this is a two-part question. As a candidate, if you're on the council, what are you going to do if Measure T passes, particularly if it means a city budget shortfall? And what are you going to do if it doesn't pass, maybe regarding enforcement?
If Measure T passes, we're looking at a huge loss in TOT and potentially, probably, the loss of our new rec center that we want to build. Most of that's going to be funded with TOT. Actually, all of that's going to be funded with TOT. And if we're not getting that from VHRs, when we cram them all down into the casinos, into the tourist core, we're losing a big chunk of the budget. But we need to get this rec center off the ground. If Measure T does not pass, we need to take another look at our regulations and laws and enforcement. We need to look at the zoning. We need to take a look at our permitting process and look at the zoning. And is there possible oversaturation? Yes, there is in some places I've seen. Thank you.
Onto candidate Middlebrook. So once again, what are you going to do if you are elected, if Measure T passes, particularly if it means a city budget shortfall? And what would you do if it didn't pass, possibly regarding enforcement or policy change?
Yes. First of all, it is very disappointing that we are in a situation where we have gotten to the point of Measure T. It's disappointing that the current city council was unable to reach a compromise in a timely manner and make a tough decision that brought us to a point where we're not now having the community decide yes or no to vacation rentals in residential zones outside of the tourist core. As city council member, either way, the community votes. I will respect that. If it passes, we will need to figure out where in the budget we make up for that loss in revenue and how we can work within the new bounds of the system to still offer the product our visitors want. Hotel vacation rentals are something that are in demand by our visitors, and we need to reach that. If Measure T does not pass, we need to seriously consider how we are zoning and protecting our neighborhoods while protecting our economic product and our economic vitality. So either way, this subject after November 6th is not going away. And if elected to council, I will work tirelessly to reach an actual compromise that balances community respect, community safety, and our tourist economy.
Candidate Wallace, you'd be next with a question. Do you want me to repeat?
No, I'm fine, thank you. I would like to echo some of what Devin just said. I believe that compromise was possible. And I am upset that we have had to go through 11 months of fighting within our community. There are so many things that we have that are so wonderful here that it's not good that we've had to do this. Whether Measure T passes or not, I believe that there's still compromise to be had. We need to find a compromise between quality of life and the economy. We all live here because we know that this is a wonderful place to live. We all live here because people want to come here. There's a compromise either way, whether it needs to go back on the ballot again or we just have to come up with a better fix. The neighborhood group needs to be listened to, and the businesses have to be listened to. We just have to find some better way to do it that doesn't, that isn't an either-or situation. It should be all of us. What's best for all of us?
Candidate Hess.
Yes, so, you know, I think as well as Devin stated, I think that the failure of the council to bring both sides to the table and find compromise is why we're here. And it is a real failure because it's created division in our community. And it's something that I believe is the truest responsibility of the council is to bring both sides to the table, find compromise, and make nobody leave the place a winner or a loser. And that clearly did not happen with VHRs. So I think that if Measure T is to pass, I think there are many solutions to work around the budget issue. I think cannabis, if it's embraced in a responsible way, would fulfill that $3 million a year. However, I also think that we could expand the tourist core. The tourist core right now doesn't go up against the edge of heavenly, doesn't come down into the Bijou Center, that we have major amounts of hotel rooms and areas. So I think that's one thing that if it did pass, we could look at making a little bit of expansion on the tourist core. If it doesn't pass, I believe that we must still see that we need compromise. I believe the vote would be very close, and that would show half of the voting population supports an entire ban. So it's not just, let's just walk away from this and leave it as it is. We've got to come to the table and find the middle ground. I believe that there are special uses that should be carved out in our permitting process. There's very unique homes and places that have been built that are never going to be rented to a long-term local. And there should be a special use process that is not over burdensome for a property owner to go through to be able to get a VHR that is maybe not of the name normal.
So candidate Gregum. What would you do if Measure T passes, particularly the city budget, budget, particularly regarding the city budget shortfall? And what would you do if it didn't pass, perhaps regarding enforcement?
You know, I kind of agree with the last three speakers that the council has failed in this situation and in other situations to bring the community together, to listen to the community. Your question about revenue loss is an important question. What's the value of working your life to buy a home and then having a motel next to you? And the noise and the, and the issues of being disruptive in the middle of the night because the next-door neighbors are running a motel? Or how about those mega homes? What about those mega homes? They should never have been allowed in our neighborhood. We're all one community, and we need to work together, and we need to be sensitive to everyone's demands. But I have, I felt that the neighbors that live in the neighborhoods, the people that are not tied to the VHR industry have been ignored. There was a compromise several months ago that may have resolved this issue with a limitation of how many DHRs with some distance issues between one VHR and another. And I believe a lot of the citizens have supported that. And when that failed, we got Measure T. So we need to look at the broader picture. So if it succeeds or fails, we still have to work on this problem because there's an industry involved, but there's also people's...
That sounds just going to be all the answers. Moving on to candidate Cole. What would you do if Measure T passes, particularly regarding the possible city budget shortfall? And what would you do if it didn't pass, possibly regarding enforcement?
First of all, opinion, if I wasn't involved in the city and if I wasn't involved in the future budgets we're having to deal with, I would support Measure T unequivocally. I think what originally was envisioned was people offering their homes on a part-time basis for visitors. What this has morphed into now is people are building motels. They're not building houses to be occupied. They're building houses that are supposed to be operated as VHRs exclusively. If it does pass, I hope for accelerated investment in the areas where it is allowed. We need to provide a product that's going to simulate, not exactly what the homes are. We need, families want to stay in something other than a 10-by-10 motel room. So the tourist areas where TIUs are allowed, we need to change our marketing. We need to change the product. My fears if this, if this does pass also is, I was involved in VHRs before we regulated them. I'm afraid they're going to go underground again. If people, all they have to say is, "I'm not renting this place. My friend of mine lets me stay here." It's going to be very hard to be bedroom police and go into these neighborhoods and find out who's renting a VHR. And we're not going to have budget for ordinances and our police patrol anymore. So it is a very walking and fine line. But I kind of hope it doesn't pass so that we can actually have another bite at the apple. And if it does pass, we're going to have to reinvest and refocus.
Candidate Hess.
So my answer's the same, whether it passes or it fails. The only exception is if it passes, we need a ballot measure to do what I propose. If it doesn't pass, we need agreement amongst council. And through my comments, I'm going to correct some of the statements made by some of the people on the dais. Council, the pro-VHR community and the anti-VHR community should have arrived at a compromise. That would have kept this very divisive issue off the ballot. I was the only council member who voted against the current ordinance and urged the council to arrive at a better set of measures to prevent a ballot measure. I wanted to do the right thing by the citizens in the city, and I knew a ballot measure would be extreme and the current situation would rip us apart, which it's doing right now. I also brokered a meeting with the ballot proponents and the VHR interests to arrive at a compromise. After a two-hour meeting, unfortunately, they could not find common ground. And as a result, no compromise was reached. So we did try to get the parties together. In fact, they sat for two hours. I fear the next few months will be ugly and fraught with confrontation and anger, and we're already seeing that right now. So a starting point for a compromise could have been a cap number lower than the current 1,400 in the non-tourist core area. And the cap would draw down via natural attrition. No one would be forced out. The other thing we would do is have a minimum distance between VHRs, so that a current VHR and when and if we got to a new VHR, there would be, for example, 150-foot distance, so you wouldn't have clusterings. The current enforcement is yielding difference-making results. But our code enforcement needs to continue to be vigilant, transparent, and strive to earn locals' trust and confidence. My answer is compromise.
Thank you. Candidate, David. Sorry.
That's right, the David and Davis. If Measure T does pass, then the council, I agree with what many of the other candidates up here are saying. The council is going to have to look at what we can do to compromise and to also continue to be fiscally solvent as a, as a city. $2.9 million is a big hit. It would happen over three years, but we would need to look at that. I think there are things that we can do. And actually, Cody might have gotten that idea from me in conversation that we can look at our tourist core area and see if we can expand some of our tourist core area where VHRs are allowed and aren't in residential areas. The council, this has been a topic that we have probably talked about maybe half of our meetings over the last four years, one of our biggest topics. It's been difficult because we have one council member that's had to recuse himself. So there were four of us that had to discuss all these topics. Any two-two vote would have made that topic not, not pass. So it's been a difficult topic internally and externally. If Measure T doesn't pass, I still think we should look at a dissenting cap and continue to honor our residents and what they want. And I think we can do that in this floor and momentarily. Thank you.
Candidate Davis.
I'm the one she's talking about that had to recuse myself. I, if it passes, I lose a company that I started 23 years ago and spent years building, and I have 35 employees. We are a responsible company. We've had very few complaints. What's killed this business, and us too, is the internet. We make people check in physically at our property. We make them sign our rules and regulations. No noise after 10 o'clock, X amount of people in the house. We make them sign a cleaning deposit. So we're very strict, so we have very few. But I came to town broke. I'll probably leave broke if this passes. But I'll look for something else to do. But I'm worried about my employees. look for something else to do. But I'm worried about my employees. I have some employees been with me for 20 years and I've had to recuse myself by law and that's been very painful because I've had some good ideas and I could have come in. Yes, the council could have found a compromise with this community and I still think that's what we have to do. Vacation rentals are going to be around, have been around for a long time and they provide a very important service for our visitor. And I've seen families. I, most of my business is repeat business and families. So we've got to find some compromise, even if it passes or if it fails, and work together. This town's been very good at finding compromises and unfortunately, we didn't find one on this major issue. Thank you.
There will be an opportunity for clarification after this next question, just so everyone knows, okay? So this next question, we're going to start with, uh, Kennedy Millbrook and we're going to move this way, just so everyone knows. Um, Kennedy Millbrook, the Snowglobe question. The next council will decide whether or not to approve a new long-term agreement with Snowglobe. Where do you stand on this issue?
Clearly, there are noise issues with Snowglobe, but I think it is also a great example of how we are diversifying our economy through arts, music, and culture to bring a different customer and a different visitor to our venue that isn't dependent on whether or not we have snow over Christmas. They have, Snowglobe has through, uh, action by the community and the community was forced to speak up and step up and make, and raise the issue of Snowglobe. If they do not follow through this year with the proposed smart sound technology that they are planning to install at the community college, there should be a serious conversation and serious doubt of whether or not to extend their contract. This year for Snowglobe is approve it or lose it year.
Yeah, I, I agree with much of what Devin has to say. I think that, uh, Snowglobe really needs to have their feet put to the fire on the new technologies and ways that they can mitigate the sound, uh, for our residents. I also believe though that we have not found the best location for Snowglobe to exist. Uh, I believe that anytime you're going to have people outside at 6,400 feet in January, uh, we should probably be at the ski resort where people are already dressed that way, already have warm shoes on. Uh, we saw a tragic accident, uh, in the beginning and I just really don't believe that it's the best event site. Uh, I do think there are many event sites in town that we need to embrace. I think we need to embrace the ideas of large-scale music festivals, film festivals, uh, but we need to embrace our community. Uh, Snowglobe, the producers are from Colorado. They fly in town. They make millions of dollars and they leave. A couple of years ago, they left our place trashed. Uh, that wouldn't happen if we looked at the local people. We have a lot of talented producers and promoters. Uh, we can make this happen from a local level with local volunteers, uh, like most communities actually see these things happen. I've been proposing for years Bijou Golf Course to be opened up for an event site. Uh, and it's something that when you look at it on Google Earth, uh, lays out about the same size as Speedway Meadows and Golden Gate Park. We could have really awesome world-class festivals on the meadows with, with genres of music that aren't disturbing to the neighborhood, uh, a little bit different to Snowglobe where I think people are just, you know, really disturbed based on, uh, kind of the bass music that it presents, uh, in the middle of, of our neighborhood. Not saying I don't want it to come back. I just think we got to find a better venue. Thank you.
Kennedy Cole?
Uh, first of all, the, the good thing, uh, one of the ben- biggest benefits I think for Snowglobe has been the dramatic improvement of state line for New Year's. When, when I was younger, up until recently, New Year's was close to highway, uh, throwing beer bottles. It was a riot. Since Snowglobe, that has almost disappeared. Everybody celebrates here. I do have a problem with subsidizing Snowglobe. I think I was the only, uh, council member voted against giving them money. I think they should be helping subsidize this to offset our costs and, and our overheads. I also think they should shorten the hours. They start in the afternoons. I think this should be an evening only and only on two days, three days. I think they should, to shorten the event itself would, would be beneficial. And I, I do believe, I've been in the music business a little myself, there are ways on the, the base is what the biggest problem is and there is ways to cancel the base and I think that's what they're, they're working on now. So I would, uh, like to see it another year. I like the hours shortened and I'd like the city to get a financial stipend rather than have to pay a subsidy.
Uh, Snowglobe is on a very short leash. They are at the end of their contract. Um, we've really, uh, we're holding their feet to the fire and, um, I believe it's about a million-dollar investment he's making in noise mitigation this year. Um, this is, this is also something that this year's going to be very important. You know, when Snowglobe came, there were about 7,500, um, people that came. Now you're up to a much larger amount. My, um, philosophical question that I ask myself is, has Snowglobe outgrown this venue? And that's a question I'm going to be asking in retrospect after this year. Um, you know, we talk about our residents and, you know, our residents are also our businesses, our employees, our workers, those that have a huge economic, um, boon from these, um, concerts that come. So it's weighing all of our community. It's weighing our economy. It's weighing whether they've outgrown this venue for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Snowglobe came about from a few years ago and we had a few years of drought. New Year's used to be a given. It's not anymore. So we looked at something to bring some visitors here, not depend on the snow. By the way, we did shorten the hours. I think it's 10 o'clock midweek and 12:30 now on New Year's Eve. The promoter's been working with us. I have mixed feelings, to be honest with you. Uh, this is a test year. I did meet, and I was the only one from the city council that showed up here about a month ago and met with the Snowglobe people, the engineers, Chad Donley, the promoter. I am encouraged by the new sound technology that's out there. If it works, if it doesn't, we got a problem. The other problem was the field and they had to replace it. It cost them $200,000 to replace that field, cost a promoter. They can't keep affording to do that. They have a new type cover that they use. The sound technology, by the way, is used in Boston, right in the middle of a neighborhood and they said it worked. So yes, they're on probation. We'll see what happens. Dialogue with the community, get your feedback and decide where to go from there. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we have all, all have basically the same information. There's no doubt that Snowglobe has an economic and marketing impact for our destination. There's also no doubt it has a serious impact on the neighborhoods that surround the college. You know, the base is a problem. And as everyone else has said, it is a make or break year. The sound technology is a big deal. The special covering they're going to be putting on the field is a big deal and he knows he's on a very short leash. Um, we don't subsidize Snowglobe anymore. The city doesn't give any money whatsoever to Snowglobe. So there's no checks being written. Yes, there were cheques, cheques written in the beginning to help with promotion and marketing, but that doesn't happen anymore. Um, Tom mentioned the hours. Yes, the hours have been shortened. So we have reduced the hours and during the midweek, it will end at 10 or 10:30 and on the weekends, it will end at 12:30. So I don't have much more to add other than what you've heard and this is the make or break year and we'll see what happens.
Can I repeat the question?
Sure. The next city council will decide whether or not to approve a new long-term co- agreement with Snowglobe. Where do you stand on the issue if elected?
First thing I want to say is this, had prior councils protected our interest, we would have a convention center, a project three. It's a promise that was broken and we have not tried to enforce it. Snowglobe could move into there. More importantly, I was on the council in 2008 where I, um, with other council members, approved the first Snowglobe. We were in the middle of recession and the, and the businesses were demanding that we try to find some kind of way to bring more people up here. I think Snowglobe was out of control. We talk about arresting the noise issue every year and every year we fail. I would not be inclined to enter into a new contract with Snowglobe. I think we need a different venue. I think we need to consider the impact on our neighborhoods again. We can't analyze every, every decision in the council based on tax revenue and how much money coming to the city. Our duty is up to the voters and our members. Is that my end?
No. Seconds.
But that's where we have to look at. We have to look at what, who we are representing. We're not representing the city or the general fund. We're representing the people that vote for us.
I think there's one very important piece that we're all forgetting here and that is that the city is a partner with the college on the Snowglobe. Um, the city can't unilaterally make a decision on Snowglobe without the college being a partner on that. So if the college chooses that they do not want to be a partner with Snowglobe, where is the city left? So we need to not decide unilaterally that we're going to do something without at least discussing this with the college. So if the college wants to partner with Snowglobe and the city wants to partner with Snowglobe, okay, let's have that discussion. But I think that one of the things that all of us have said is that maybe this venue is not the appropriate venue. I am all for bringing new, eh, new economy to this community. I think it's a wonderful thing. I think that the council back in 2008, who chose to bring Snowglobe here, did the right thing for our businesses. The, the great recession was, was terrible for our community. But we need to think, who are we working with on this? And we need to discuss this with the college before we just decide what we're going to do.
I think Snowglobe has been both good and bad for this community. Good in the fact that it has brought visitors and it has improved the economy and helped out a lot of businesses during those lean times. Bad in the fact that, no, the city council wasn't listening to the voters when they approved this thing. And when it was first approved, yes, the city council did pay for it. They, they were paying for these promoters to do basically what is their job, promoting. So it's good to hear that they're not paying for it anymore. But to echo with what council, what, uh, candidate Millbrook and Bass said, this is, we need to diversify. We need more events like this. If the city council was to approve, say, I don't know, food trucks, we could have these outdoor events and we need to diversify and have a lot more of these events so people could have a choice of where they want to go to. And then you've got the food trucks. They're there. They're not taking away business from people that want to go to a restaurant and have a sit-down meal, but they're there for these events when people, they don't need a special permit. That's already taken care of. Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, we will, uh, provide an opportunity for clarification. So you'll each have 45 seconds. Who wants to have Austin, Wendy? Cody, Austin, Wendy. So I've got four people? Okay. Uh, we'll go by seniority in this round, so, um, it would probably be, um, Austin.
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about the comments made by Mr. Cole as far as dysfunction of the city. Um, he cited three people leaving the city. The city attorney left the city to move closer to his family. That's why he left. City clerk left because she retired. She's not working anywhere else. She retired. The city manager was put on administrative leave and everything else that happened after that was done in closed session, which we can't discuss because of the Brown Act. And in addition, we signed a non-disparaging agreement, so we can't talk about that either. So as far as the dysfunction, you know, take away some of the gossip that you read in the local papers and watch a meeting on TV and this council works very professionally together and has gotten all the business of the city done. Second of all, he made a comment about the roads management authority with regard to the sales tax to fix the streets. That was in the proposal.
Kennedy Griggs?
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll follow up on, I'll follow up on what, um, Mr. Sasse said. We did, um, have, uh, this council has been probably one of the more responsible councils in going out for the roads tax. We went out twice to the voters. We went out for a general tax that failed. We went and backed out for a designated tax and, um, that was 56%. It got the majority. It did not get the super majority. And we had a road management authority that we'd already interviewed for and was going to have in place. I want to hit FIRE as well. Um, FIRE, as soon as we got our risk management report that showed that we needed to open Station 2, that very next council meeting, we all voted to open Station 2 and it's in the works right now to go for grant funding to open it. Thank you.
It's going to actually be, uh, Council Gregor, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Kennedy Griggs. Kennedy Cole, I want to clarify, you did not raise your hand in the beginning. I can't change the rules halfway through. We have more people that did. No, sorry. Next time, raise your hand. Um, so Kennedy Griggs?
I tried to outline at the very beginning where my experience lies. I've been engaged with city committees and I was in the planning commission for nine years, on the city council before, other involvement. I also worked hard to force the TRPA to listen to us and I worked with the state of Nevada to, um, pass SB 271 to cause them to listen to us. But my, the point I'm trying to make real quick is, the point I'm trying to make real quick is, I don't disagree with what Devin says, his ideas, but he's a member of the TRPA and I think that's a conflict of interest. I think you can't vote on land use issues. We have been adverse to the TRPA since the beginning.
I would like to clarify about clarification.
You will have a chance.
His...
We're going to take the same rules? No, we're taking the same rules.
His wasn't a clarification though. His was an additional attack.
Another period. Move another period. It's time. Go on. Kennedy Bass?
Definitely. Thank you. Uh, I'd like to take real quick clarification with, uh, Fire Station 2. I don't know why it takes a report to know that we need three fire stations that we've always had in our town, especially to remove the middle fire station in our town. Secondly, you just voted two meetings ago, not to give the funding back, but to have the, the fire chief, uh, apply for a grant. Uh, the money is in the budget to immediately open the station. Should have been done. Second thing I would like to take clarification, uh, is good cannabis policy that Austin Sasse talked about. We, uh, just saw the second measure have to go against the council's move through a referendum. 1,287 voters signed because this was terrible cannabis policy to put our cannabis licenses up for auction to the, to the highest bidder, uh, which would be corporate cannabis, as well as shutting down, uh, enforcing the existing cannabis dispensary that's been here decades removed.
All right. So I'd like to point out, every candidate will have a closing statement opportunity and there will be one more opportunity for clarification and comments. All right. All right. So we're moving on to the next question. Um, we're going to start with Candidate Wallace and we're going to move this way and wrap around to Candidate Jared. Transit Service.
Oh, yay.
Okay. What is the city's role with regard to public transit and/or community mobility in total? Uh, no, currently the city does not budget the contribution to help with support of public transit.
Well, I'm not sure that anyone in this room is going to like my answer. Um, I am one of those people that believes that for the most part, government should be as small as possible. And so this city was created to provide police, fire, and roads and just about all that they should do is police, fire, and roads. And although transit is very important, the, the most that they should have involved in transit is getting out of the way and allowing it to happen.
Okay. Kennedy Griggs?
When I was on the council in 2008, I rode every bus and I was sorry to see that most buses ran empty. We're not running the system efficiently. I think we have to do more of getting buses to and from Carson City. I think the bus system is more designed, it should be designed to deal with people that go to work. I can't see people driving up to Lake Tahoe, hundreds of miles, and then getting out and going on a bus. I don't think it worked then. I don't think it works now. But that's would be my focus, to narrow what public transportation does and try to accommodate employees and students.
Transportation situation on South Shore is a lot better than the city. As Bruce said, people need to get to Carson City to get up here to go to work. They need to go from Myers to get into the city to go to work. They need to be able to get over to Northshore. The tourists need to be able to get to Emerald Bay. On incline, they need to get to Sand Harbor. There's no amount of money that's going to make up for the lack of service that we have here. Right now, the Tahoe Transportation District has a 15% Fairbox recovery. That's it. In addition, we're having trouble getting drivers to come up here because of the housing situation. On top of that, federal and state grants have been cut so that the service has been reduced even further this year, despite the fact that we have contribution from partners like Heavenly and the casinos. The long-term solution to transportation, not only for the city, but for the entire lake, is a basin-wide transportation system. And then the question comes, where do you get the funding from? None of us are going to support a tax to pay for transportation for tourists. So the answer is to make sure that the tourists pay when they come into the basin. Right now, at the Tahoe Transportation District and the TRPA, lots of discussions going on about how we might implement an entry fee into the basin so that the tourists are paying their fair share to pay for a transportation system, whether it's buses, where bike paths, or ferries are coming across the lake. Of course, any program like that would ensure that locals are not paying the amount of money that the tourists are paying to get into the basin. This will be a long, hard road to go down to because of legislation that exists, especially in the state of Nevada, that prohibits toll roads coming into the basin.
Thank you. Men, if you know, I was in the gaming business for 25 years. We used to run our...
We used to run our own shuttles. Harvey's had one, Barney's had one, Harris had one, Harvey's. All of us had shuttles. And they were free to the visitors. We didn't cater to visitors, but also our employees could ride them to work. And when we went to a pay system, we developed a system in the casinos. And I don't know what they do now, but we would reimburse our employees to buy a ticket on the shuttle. But our visitors use it. And what's interesting is, during the holiday period when they do the free service, our ridership jumps, jumps real high. The cities funds that we get for transportation go right to the TTD. We pass those through because it's better to pool your money with other agencies. So the only answer is money, folks, and where are we gonna get it? It kind of, if we get a free bus service in this city, you're talking about a little over, what, two million dollars, a million and a half? More than that to run a free system? Where are we gonna get it? We're not gonna get it from the feds. Not gonna get it from you. And we're not gonna have enough Fairbox recovery from the visitor because if it's free, there's no Fairbox recovery. So what's the challenge? Thank you.
Well, I believe in collaboration and working together. I believe that we're all one South Shore and that traffic and transit is going to be one of our biggest issues for the next ten to twenty years if we don't have, start having some long-term vision around it. I firmly believe that this city can be one of those partners in forming a transit and housing plan, especially along our Highway Fifty Quarter, especially out to Emerald Bay and out to our beaches. And truly, if we don't start taking public transit seriously and getting people out of their cars and into public transportation, we're going to have gridlock. And I think you'd all agree, we saw it several times this summer. I don't know what that plan will be. I do know that, that if, I'm fortunate enough to be on the council again, that I would heavily suggest and be pushing for us having a long-term vision plan that is workforce housing, accessible public transportation, and getting out of our cars.
Probably the most complicated and most important problem to our city is transportation. As we've all said, Fairbox doesn't support the service. It has to be subsidized. We don't have bus service like you would have in inner cities where you actually have a commute one direction and back another direction. Our bus service is not just for residents. It's for ski areas, two different states, casinos, schools. When we do see successes like the Nifty Fifty, it was taking our tourists to Emerald Bay and places of interest, and it was fun. Our, whatever transportation we're gonna do has to be convenient and it has to get the tourists where they want to go, is the beaches. There's so many interlaced problems with this that I certainly don't have the answer, but the answer, as we've said, is gonna be, it has to be subsidized fairly substantially. And the city doesn't have near the means to provide a transportation system.
So yeah, this has been a question and concern for me for, which I've dug into in a big way. You know, I look around to other cities that are comparable to our size, such as Park City, where they have an entirely electric bus vehicle, bus fleet. They've got thirty-minute pickup time at every stop and the bus rides are completely free. And I look to us and I say, how in the world are we in California, the wealthiest state in the nation, with the border of Nevada? We have five counties, two states, and we're talking about lack of resources. It doesn't make any sense when you look over to Utah, a much smaller state, and Park City, a much smaller tourist population. How can we not figure out not only free bus rides, but electric bus rides? Sustainability must be a major key of our transportation system. So as I've looked farther into it, my true belief in what we need to do is get together with the other municipal partners, two states, and make a new joint powers authority that's purely focused on public transit. Tahoe Transportation District is focused on more than just public transit. And I think it kind of dilutes their ability to really put this robust system in place. If we got a new joint powers authority, we could get a director that is very, you know, master or specialized very much in the public transit. When you look at TTD and the projects that they're encompassing, it goes much farther than public transit. And I think that's why public transit gets left behind. Thanks.
I will be the dead horse. We can all agree our transportation system needs improvement and the city of South Lake Tahoe should play its role as an implementation agency in providing not only transit, roads, but also bike paths and support innovative solutions like Chariot and Limebike.
I've lived outside this country. For two years, I lived in Germany. They have a fabulous public transportation system. We can have that here. We just need, it's gonna, it's gonna require funding, a public-private partnership, definitely, and collaboration between the five counties, the two states. I would love to be able to, any day of the week, go out and get on a bus and ride up to Tahoe City or North Shore or wherever. But that doesn't exist. That should be three sixty-five, year-round service. We need to get stuff like that. We need to get that, this going so we can get people out of their cars. They need a reliable transportation system. We have to find the funding. We have to get a public-private partnership tied up and get the local governments involved, whether county, city, whatever, to take the steps and bring the people together to find an answer to a transportation problem. Thank you.
All right, the next question's gonna start with Candidate Bass. Move this way and wrap around to Candidate Millbrook. Cannabis. That was not planned, I swear. It was not. If the current council cannot develop a compromised cannabis ordinance and the issue of a revisal falls onto the next council, if elected, what should be the path forward? What consideration, and also, what consideration should be given to possible public safety?
Yeah, so, you know, I will, as in my candidate statement, I make a strong commitment and by law would need to recuse from a vote on cannabis. However, I have a lot of expertise and I'll always be willing, and as I have in the past decade, let my expertise as a citizen to the council. However, I will have to recuse. I believe that the cannabis industry, as I sit on the board of the National Cannabis Industry Association, have been elected to that board twice, is really the next American industry that is going to be, provide major economic stimulus to communities throughout the country and eventually throughout the world. And we need to embrace this. We also need to look back and realize that cannabis has been a part of this community for decades and decades. And even though it may have been in the underground and there was a policy that is now known to be a failed policy against it, we need to embrace the fact that this has been part of our community for decades. Tahoe Wellness, in our biggest years, have done, you know, north of five million dollars. Two and a half million of that was money that went to direct growers and people in this community. And it's spread across a great deal of people. So the current council has passed an ordinance that would allow six licenses in town. However, it made it into an auction. It made it to where a development agreement process would have to be reached. The planning commission would score the best development agreement, which is based on how much money you can give the city to be selected. And that's an auction. And that would give that, these six licenses to outside interests. And that would be reversing the trend of the cannabis that sold in town coming from in-town going to our local people. And we really need an ordinance that keeps this local.
As many know, Prop 64 legalized recreational marijuana, which I think was well overdue. I think the medical marijuana was just a little more than what recreational is. What the referendum that passed in the ballot, all it did is repeal the city's ordinance. The city has no ordinance now. So technically, someone could come in, ask for a license, and could not be denied without any good standing. But if, if we do nothing, we're gonna have an unregulated business. I do think we need to have some say where and when, just like ABC controls liquor. We need to control how many, where they're located, not near schools. But it needs to be done pretty soon because my understanding of that referendum, our ordinance goes away. It talked about the Wild West. It's gonna be, it's gonna be open season until the city either puts a moratorium while they decide how to rewrite their ordinance or rewrite the ordinance as quickly as possible. But it does need to be regulated, but it is here to stay.
Very disappointing to me that the referendum passed. We had worked very hard to find the ordinance that we felt was fair, that the community applauded us on in general. And we do have a moratorium in place because when the ordinance was repealed, then we went back to what we had before. So we have an ordinance in place till December seventh. And then we have an opportunity, if we do not have an ordinance at that time, to extend that for up to a year. So the moratorium is in place right now. I, Mr. Bass likes to call it an auction. We like to call it good planning that opened it up to people to apply so that we can get the very best, the best people that applied for that. It's, it was fair. It was well done. We will now have to come back with substantive changes. And we're working on that quickly. We have a subcommittee that's working on it. And we will be bringing it back, hopefully, to our October sixteenth council meeting.
Thank you. I sit on the subcommittee with Brooke Lane. We started down this road back in September of last year. We had over thirty-six hours of meetings with twenty-some people across section. Girls and Boys Club were on this committee. We came up with an ordinance that we, city did it up one-one-eight, I think it is. One-one-eight. But I have a solution to this. And this is what I hope the committee listens to on Monday, when they meet at nine AM at the council chambers. I propose that we grant Cody a non-conforming recreational license, but we add one more license on the other side because all these people have been waiting for two years to get a license. It's not fair to them when they've been told there's four licenses and you give one to somebody, a grandfather somebody, and now they're short one and they're upset. These people are paying big money. I know one, one folks told me he had to pay eighty-five thousand dollar non-refundable deposit to landlord. This is big money. So that's my proposal. See if we come to a resolution. Get this resolved, move beyond this referendum, and do what's right for our community. We're gonna be tied up in court and legal fees. We're probably in this already three, four hundred thousand dollars. Hey, we could use that to pave our roads. Hey, how do you like this? Pave our roads with pot.
So the city council did pass a cannabis ordinance. It did get overturned as a result of Mr. Bass organizing, getting a referendum together which required approximately ten-hundred-and-ninety signatures. So he hired people and they stood outside of post offices and he stood out at grocery stores and he told people different things. And eventually, he got his signatures and that was validated. And so here we are with a suspended ordinance that does have a moratorium in place, as Ms. David said. There's not gonna be a Wild West. People aren't going to apply. The ordinance that we passed would not have been an auction because it had preference in there for locals. It was a hundred-point scoring rubric. Nine of those points could only be achieved by living here three years. So that was geared to locals. Second of all, in order to come into town and open a business, you had to have access to real estate. The permits for five thousand square foot indoor grows and the micro business up to ten thousand square foot indoor grows, you know the town. Look around. How many industrial buildings are there can accommodate that size? So locals who had access to those buildings had a big leg up on the out-of-town people. Going forward, there's a meeting on Monday. The subcommittee is myself and council member Lane. Our goal on Monday is to listen to the stakeholders, come up with revised ordinance, one-one-one-eight with substantive changes, and get it in front of the council for review on October sixteenth. From there, we'll go to the planning commission, then back to council for a first and second reading.
If the current council cannot develop a compromised cannabis ordinance and the issue of a revised ordinance falls to the next council, if elected, what should be the path forward and what consideration should be given to public safety?
First of all, I've worked with the cannabis industry when I was on the council. But what this referendum shows us, the referendum shows us that this council's out of touch. To get a referendum, to get the signatures necessary to set aside an ordinance is a very short fuse, twenty, thirty days, and you have to get so many signatures to qualify. The referendum is a reflection on the council's failure to listen to the people. When, when the Loop Road petition was presented with sixteen hundred and people were asking to place on the ballot, the city council worked to try to defeat the will of the people there. Parking meters, same issues. The council is out of touch. The council is out of touch. We need to change them.
So if they do not come up with a revised measure or a revised code and it does fall to a future council, I think that what council member David said, or Davis said, is something that I would be for. I think that that's a good compromise. It also gives the people who are in the industry an opportunity to have an even playing field for future businesses in the community. Anybody who knows me and knows my family knows that this is not my favorite topic. However, I did hear something in the news today that the Mormon church has backed cannabis in the state of Utah today. And so I guess maybe my family is on the tail end of this. So maybe we need to come into this century. I'm trying to get my head around that. So I am, I'm learning all kinds of new things from Mr. Bass and Mr. Starr back here and I'm looking forward to learning more, I think. I think. I think.
I think Candidate Gregor said it best when he said this council is out of touch. But they're not just out of touch with this city and the voters of this, the citizens of this city. There's, they seem to be out of touch with what's going on all around us. Every month, there's, twice a month, this issue comes up at city council meetings. And I sit there and shake my head, not understanding why they cannot figure this out. Meanwhile, Nevada is reporting tax revenues far exceeding what they're expecting. Every month, they are making millions upon millions of dollars on cannabis. We need a slice of that pie. And the city council needs to figure this out. This should have been done, we, it's been legal in California since January twenty eighteen. We could have been making money all this time. It should have been being looked at two years ago. Thank you.
Yeah, so I agree with everyone. We need the safe, secure, regulated development of the cannabis industry. Cannabis is in town. It's always been in town. It's not going anywhere. We need to be able to have the resources for our police department and our schools to deal with it. I was one of the members of the citizen cannabis subcommittee that the city brought together. I was in all of those meetings Tom mentioned. We came up with, I thought, was a very good compromise that balanced public health and safety and allowing for this new industry to develop and for us to gain tax revenue from it. It's disappointing that the city council, from our recommendations, tweaked things that then led to Cody pushing for the referendum. Again, we need self-safe development of this industry and something I was intimately involved with this development and will continue to be involved with whether or not I'm elected to city council.
All right. Next question is economic development. And we'll start with Candidate Gregor. I'm gonna move this way and wrap around. The city has traditionally played a major role in redevelopment, in economic development. For example, Emily Village, Harrison Avenue, the new Bijou Marketplace. Should this tradition continue? And if so, where do you see other opportunities?
I have concern about how the city's proceeded with redevelopment. You remember Project Three, the whole? We lost ten years of revenue. We destroyed a lot of little businesses. The projects never finished. Promises were made by the developers to the city regarding housing, transportation. They've never been met. The convention center is now just a memory. Yet we, the public, gave that project thousands, if not more, of benefits in land use benefits, in getting rid of roads to give them more land coverage and all these issues, and we haven't done it. Our government needs to stay out of the way and let businesses thrive without interference as they have now. We need things developed, but we shouldn't pick, as Tammy Wallace says, winners and losers. We need to let the private sector do what it needs to do. When the government gets involved, then there's no longer economic issues alone that determines what business will do. I support small businesses and redevelopment is bad for small businesses.
I think the best thing we can do with redevelopment... I think the best thing we can do with redevelopment is continue to feed the things that are drawing some new entrepreneurs to town. Better schools, better recreation product, making the town a better place to live and working on affordable and workforce housing. If you take a look around town at some of the entrepreneurs that have come over the last couple of years, Mountain Lab, Luganic Climbing Gym, South Lake Brewing, Outdoor Gear Lab on Ski Run Boulevard, Corey Rich Productions on out on Ski Run Boulevard, one of the world's foremost photographers. I know these people pretty well and the reason they came here is because they view Tahoe as a great place to live and a great place to raise their families. We are never gonna get into the manufacturing business. It's just not gonna happen in this town. We're never gonna get any big industries like Apple to move here. We don't have the space for them anywhere. And so we're gonna do it gradually, a hundred entrepreneurs at a time with their families, which will yield another hundred, which will yield another hundred. It's going to take time, but we're gonna continue to go through the metamorphosis. The other thing we can keep working on is our recreational product. After tourism, we have decided that recreation is where we're going and so has the rest of the basin. So we need to continue on the path that we're going and we will get more and more people coming here because of the lifestyle and the affordability versus some of the places they're coming from like San Francisco and San Mateo.
Thank you. A big supporter of economic development. It cures the ills of the sixties what this town used to look like. It has environmental positive impacts, air quality, aesthetics. By the way, we were putting twenty percent set aside for affordable housing and redevelopment. We built over four hundred apartments and stuff for our seniors, for handicapped in this town. Jerry Brown abandoned the redevelopment agencies. We lost that money. No cost to you. Station One on Ski Run didn't cost a taxpayer dime. That came from redevelopment. So there were benefits that came to our community. What killed the project was a recession in 2007. Yes, we were harmed too, but how about the developer had millions of dollars in that project and filed bankruptcy? So he got caught up in the economic downturn, which hurt the project and hurt the rest. I worked hard to bring this back. By the way, now at Heavenly Village, you have thirty-three people on a waiting list to rent space there now. When I first opened, they couldn't find enough tenants. Now they found the right tenants. We're going through the same thing across the street and that project will move forward next spring. Our staff's been working with the developer to finally complete that. The Ski Run project, I think you all have been agreed, it's gonna look beautiful. It was an old motel there. So there is a renaissance. I think you'll all agree. Town's not looking bad. Thank you.
I'm gonna stand up for this one because I believe this is a very important question. It's going to separate possibly for you who you're gonna vote for for your next city council. I couldn't agree more with Mr. Davis when he uses the word renaissance. We are in a renaissance. In 2007, 2008, if you looked around our town, we were a sad and sorry lot. We were losing businesses. We'd had the Angora fire and we were in the recession. Ten years later, we can say that we are in a bona fide renaissance. Eight hundred million dollars of economic investment. We depend on sales tax. We depend on TOTs. We depend on our property tax. We depend on our people that live here, having jobs, being able to work. Having a vibrant community depends on many things, but it depends on economic development. So think carefully about whether you're looking for a progressive candidate or a candidate that is not. Thank you.
Boy, economic development, two minutes. First of all, we talked about a renaissance. The biggest renaissance the city's ever had is 1994. We have pictures of what it looked like from crescent via overhead power lines, motel after motel, motel. Biggest renaissance we had was redevelopment. It seems like a dirty word, but we were able to use tax increment, which I don't need to explain in two minutes, to finance all that. When tax increment went away, economic development now is piece by piece. We don't want to develop parcel by parcel. As we saw with Whole Foods, we were able to take a redevelopment parcel of the corner, the Super Eight Motel, do some entitlements, cooperate with Placer County to buy the entitlements, and we were able to do block by block. That is really the economic incentive we need. I do think we need infill of entrepreneurs and all businesses, but the big economic investment in this community needs to be done on a large enough scale that we can make major improvements. We're catching thousands of pounds of sediment because of that Bijou Park, Bijou Creek project we're doing right now. And we're gonna be acquiring properties upstream to catch even more. So economic development requires a lot of concentrated investment. I'm prepared to do that. I was involved with redevelopment since 1994. I wasn't on the council when they gave a permit to put a foundation across twenty-nine parcels where the hole is, whatever people think. I was not involved with that, but I certainly was involved with the Bijou Creek project and redevelopment and I would welcome any chance I could to continue the investment in our infrastructure.
So yeah, I believe that redevelopment is an absolute necessary thing within any city. There's aging infrastructure. There's, you know, we have aging motels. However, I really do believe we need to rethink the way that we are redeveloping. I think the idea of tear down and rebuild may not be always the best thing. I think that we need to create funds that are incentives for motel owners that they can refound their hotel and really give it a new idea. I think that there, we have really kind of been over for redevelopers that are from out of town. Haberty Development out of Orange County, we really as a city went and did everything we could for them and gave them concessions to open up and build and make millions of dollars from our commercial real estate in our town. We should actually be doing what we're doing with cannabis and using a development agreement for what it's really for, which is for a developer that is coming in, making huge amounts of money, hold their feet to the fire, make them build affordable housing. There's no reason that when Haberty's gonna walk in here and make hundreds and hundreds of thousands a month that we can't say, you know what? We need you to also build fifty units of affordable housing. You're not gonna make the same margin that you're gonna make at the Whole Foods development, but we need people, places for these people to live that are gonna work there. And we need you to step up and do that. You have the money. We also should be making them build in the most environmental standards that there are. We have no lead requirements for new development. Why is that? Why in San Francisco with new buildings, they're required to build to the highest environmental standard, but yet in Lake Tahoe, the most beautiful place in the world, we're letting people build things with particle board?
Economic development is the greatest challenge and opportunity our community faces. We need to rethink how our economy is based. It no longer has to be based on gaming and whether or not we get snow or the lake level is receding because of drought. We can turn our economy to be focused on outdoor recreation, technology, entrepreneurship, and healthcare services, where we can export our intellectual capital and ideas and our brain power and our creativity to across the globe through the internet and import money without having people to come here physically, clogging our roads, using our resources to spend their money. We don't need to rely on the old way of doing anything, doing things anymore. We can look towards the future. That really starts with the community and the city supporting expansion of high-speed broadband and cell service in this community. How are you supposed to sell your services over the internet if you can't even connect to the internet? Economic development is also our greatest opportunity to deal with housing. It doesn't matter how affordable housing is if you don't have a job that can pay for it. The Bijou Center, AKA Knights Inn, where all that redevelopment is going on, has been mentioned by several candidates. But what are the eight minimum wage jobs at Chipotle, Five Guys, and Panda Express? Are those really the jobs and the economic development we want for our community? Or is it like council member Sasse says, where Chris McNamara and Corey Rich are creating living wage jobs where they intentionally created jobs where their employees can buy homes and afford to live in Tahoe? That's the future we need to focus on.
As far as economic development goes, we really need to do an investment in our intellectual capital here in this city. We need to increase broadband all over the basin. Austin Sasse said that we're not gonna get an apple up here. He's right. Apple's not gonna move up here, but a lot of their employees will if they can telecommute. That, we can get these people moving up here, invest in our intellectual capital that we have, these entrepreneurs, these people that are building, that are creating these living wage jobs. We need more of that. We need more development and the city council needs to help these people out and give them a little nudge along the way. See what we can get going in this town. Let's bring Tahoe into the 21st century.
Can you repeat the question?
No. Economic development is actually my absolute favorite topic. My very first real job was as economic development director for the Tulare Chamber of Commerce. So let's be clear what economic development really is. Economic development is bringing new wealth into a community. It's not redistributing wealth within a community. So as pretty as the new Whole Foods project is, that's economic redistribution. It's dividing the pie into smaller pieces and it's wonderful and it's great, but it is not economic development. Economic development is the recruitment, retention, and expansion of high-paying jobs into a community. So redevelopment was economic development and that is good for a community and we should push that. But we have an economic development agency in this town that is doing a good job. Tahoe Prosperity Center is doing a good job and we should, we should help them do that. We should support that agency. Heidi Hill Drum has done an incredible job of economic development and we need to support that. The chambers, Steve DeShere, myself, our chambers need to support Heidi Hill Drum in her efforts at economic development. The city should get out of the way and let them do it.
All right. We move on to the second round of... How come I knew everyone would raise their hand, huh? Jared? Jared, do you have anything? Okay. So it looks like we have pretty much everyone. This round will start outside in basically with statements, so that would be...
Yes, I would like to address Bruce Grego's comment about me having to recuse myself because I work for the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. My role at TRPA is managing our sustainability program, so I work on very discrete tasks such as electric vehicles, renewable energy, recreation. According to the Fair Political Practices Commission of California, I would only have a conflict as a council member if it had direct adverse impacts for my day-to-day job. If, for example, I was a council member and wanted to approve funding for electric vehicle charging stations, yes, that's a conflict. But I don't do contracting with the city. I don't do permitting with the city. I don't approve their projects. From that perspective, as a council member, I would not have to recuse myself from TRPA issues. Additionally, in the last year, the city council has only voted on less than a handful of actual land use issues, as Bruce said.
Yeah, I would just like to again address the issue around cannabis and the referendum. Essentially, we passed the referendum, the voters of South Lake Tahoe passed the referendum because the development agreement actually was twenty-five points of the hundred-point rubric. So yes, as Austin likes to tell you, nine points were for being local. When you have a million bucks, you can give the city, you get twenty-five points for the entire development agreement. That overrides the nine points for the local community. This was something that I don't believe was very much maybe intentional. I do believe that it was an orchestrated effort with our last outsourced city attorney, HDL Consultants. They make this so that really only their clients can walk into a city and win our licenses and take another piece of our economy outside of town.
Next one to candidate Wallace.
Okay. I would just like to refer to Mr. Sasse's basin user fee comment. I'm concerned that if TRPA is attempting to change their policies to allow a basin user fee, that TRPA may eventually get to the point where they would want to limit the amount of people entering the basin and that concerns me greatly.
Moving on to candidate Cole.
Yeah, I would like to rebut council member Sasse's statement that the city manager issue can only be discussed in closed session and it isn't a reason for the months and months of dysfunction. I dispute that. It's not true that you cannot talk about Ms. Carey. You just can't say anything disparaging about her. If she did something so egregious, she should have been fired. She was not fired. Would she say, you talked about one billion dollar goal of investment, that was a goal she set up, saved forty million dollars in retiree health restructuring, speaks all over the state. Would you give a city manager who served the city for ten years, five minutes of your time just to hear what, she wasn't allowed to say anything in public, anything in private? I think the city deserves to know so much more than she is.
Time. I will point out, we're gonna increase your closing statements to two minutes, save one more time. It moves on to, for clarification, to candidate Grego.
Being on the council, I would be really concerned about having a member of the TRPA within closed session and dealing with those issues and trying to say, well, does he work in this area or that area? Redevelopment, you know we pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Marriott Center, Heavenly Valley, as an annual fee regarding sidewalks and things? You know, we talked about VHR, lost money potentially, yet we let Heavenly Valley have an agreement that we don't tax their ski tickets on the gondola, on the gondola. I also agree with Tammy, I was gonna bring it up. I oppose a basin user fee. Creating a basin user fee will give the bureaucrats the ability to restrain who comes into our basin.
Time. It's candidate David.
Thank you very much. Two quick comments. One is in respect to cell service basin-wide, working on that. The Tahoe Prosperity Center is actually, that's one of the big projects that's going on right now. So I want to just say to the audience that working on it, aware of it, done a lot of research and yes, let's improve our cell service. So working on that. Also, to Mr. Grego's comment of the council being out of touch, we have approximately sixty to seventy people in our audience at most city council meetings. We have reached out extensively, especially on cannabis. So it's easier, easy when you're not actually a city council member to say those things, but I'm here to tell you that this council has been very opportunistic.
Time. On to candidate Sasse.
So a few things with regard to Mr. Cole's statement of Ms. Carey. Unless Mr. Cole had information that was in violation of the Brown Act, he has no idea whether Ms. Carey was offered the opportunity to talk publicly or not. With regard to the two TRPA and the entry fee and limiting people from coming into the basin, I sit on the TRPA governing board, there's never once been a discussion about limiting people coming into the Tahoe basin. So if you believe that because you're anti-government, that we're gonna go ahead and limit people coming into the basin, then you're kind of misleading about that. Finally, with regard to cannabis and the development agreement, everybody who's interested in getting into the cannabis in this town, except for Mr. Bass, was in support of the development agreement. So he was the only one that did want the development agreement.
I'm on to...
Yeah, this is true speed dating, so I'll be fast. Basin user fee is off the table. I looked at it years ago when it was proposed. We have eight, seven or eight different entry points in the basin. The fee would be obnoxious in administration. We don't want. The cost would be so high, the entry fee would, I think we estimated forty-five dollars a car. That ain't gonna happen. Second of all, redevelopment note. Redevelopment was voted on by advisory vote of the public, I think, and I think Duane remembers during the chamber meeting. And the last thing, cannabis issue, we have listened to the people and we had thirty-eight hours of meetings. We had numerous city council meetings. If you don't get everything, you're not listening to people. If you get everything, you are. So it's been a tough one. Thank you.
All right. At this point in time, I've set up Malina Heil, the president of the student senate, to ask the last two questions that pertain to issues that the students want to know about. So I'll turn it over to her.
The first question that we're going to discuss is in regards to affordable housing and we're gonna start with candidate Cole and we'll wait around and with candidate... Can you chuck up on that mic, please? Yeah. Can you chuck up on that mic? Oh, sorry. Is that better? Okay. Okay. The question is, what do you feel is the city's role in addressing the need for affordable resident housing? And if you're elected, what actions would you champion?
Well, I've, the city role is to get out of the way and try to make development as easy and as cheap as we can. Nineteen ninety-four, I was on the TRPA Affordable Housing Committee where we tried to get away the use of entitlements to build affordable housing. We've got that far. Affordable housing needs some kinds of subsidies. Since we don't have redevelopment, we built three hundred and forty affordable housings, a Senior Plaza, Kelly Ridge, all with the twenty percent set aside for redevelopment. We don't have that anymore. So the city has to use every means it has, whether it's permit fees, whether it's forgiveness of any kind of entitlements that we can afford to do in order to let developers come in. If large employers come in, we should make sure that they provide housing for their employees. It is something just like transportation. It's very expensive, but it is so important for our community. We don't want people living in hotel rooms. We tried to modify the hotel ordinance to let them have temporary living facilities there, but that is just a Band-Aid on it. The real solution is to find, make parcels of land and partner up with people who are gonna develop moderate and... who are going to develop moderate and affordable. Moderate is just as important as, as low-income housing, so. No easy solution, but, uh, I think all of us in this room agree that it has to be done.
Candidate David.
Okay. Um, actually, some exciting things are happening, um, with affordable housing. And, um, one of them is, uh, Mr. Sassa and I serve on the housing, we're the council members on the Housing Subcommittee. We have determined that many of the developers are having, uh, want to come to Tahoe, but are having a difficult time penciling out how they make a profit, which I think you referred to. We are looking at bringing flexible, um, parking, um, uh, changing codes, possibly changing policies, so that we can build affordable housing that doesn't have as great a parking requirement. If we can cut down our parking requirement, go more with the California rules for parking, California code instead of our code, so looking at that, everyone's on board. We, um, had multi-agencies there yesterday, so that is one thing. We also are looking at an accessory dwelling unit, um, one that would provide, um, additional dwelling units that would not be available for VHRs, and we'll be looking at our tiny home, um, as well. So multifaceted, many things to look at, but we are taking this as one of our top priorities.
Back in the seventies, my wife and I bought a house. We paid sixty thousand dollars for it, and we said, how in the hell we're going to make six hundred dollar a month? House, baby. Well, we both worked together, uh, to do it, so it's tough. So the question is, what is affordable housing? And we have to define what that number is. It's not six hundred thousand, it's not five hundred, it's got to be affordable for the average working person. The city has some commodities. I'm working with a developer right now, has eleven acres down at the Y, and there's other people working on this Tahoe Prosperity Center, the City Council Subcommittee. He wants to build eight units on that project. We have the sewer district, thanks to Duane, has reduced their fees, and we're looking at the sewer permits that we have banked from the, uh, Knights Inn as an incentive to build these eight with deed-restricted, uh, properties. So I'm going to see if this is a, this works, if this works, maybe we can take this template and work it through the city. By the way, the Nevada side has to step up too, and they haven't done, even when I worked there, they haven't done that in years. We're providing the housing for them at our expense, so it's not an easy solution. It's land use, it's commodities, it's a whole bunch of things, but we're still going to move forward and see if we can come up with something. If I can work on this as a test project, we can work this off through town.
Housing, um, affordable workforce and senior housing are big needs locally. Every business in the service industry is currently looking for employees. The number-one impediment that businesses cite is a shortage of housing. So what can we do? So within the city, we already approved a housing assessment study. So it's easy to say we need housing, but the question is, how many housing units do we need exactly? And we don't know exactly what the answer is. So the housing assessment study was the first step to tell us how many units we need to satisfy the needs locally. That will include interviews with people in the community, assessment of land that's available, of affordable housing that's already in place. As a member of the TRPA, I just, with Regional Plan Implementation Committee, approved a new policy on housing that will award bonus development rights for affordable, attainable, and workforce housing. This will be voted on next month by the entire TRPA governing board, but it came out of our committee, and I anticipate that it's going to be passed. So that will make it easier for developers. More work needs to be done within the TRPA to allow increased density. For example, some developers say pencils, uh, projects won't pencil out unless they can have more height. So if we put a higher building in an area that doesn't impede the scenic corridor, why not consider it? Second of all, we have tiny homes and we have granny units. Those need increased density as well. Finally, we need to take a look at parking. If you look at major cities, their requirement for parking in housing projects is a lot less than we have here in Tahoe.
What do you feel is the city's role in addressing the need for affordable housing for residents? And if you're elected, what actions would you champion?
First of all, affordable housing and roads are my top priorities if I get elected. But what can be done? I have talked to so many people that have been displaced because of VHRs. Voting for Measure T will have an impact on, on, on affordable housing. Not studies, not trying to tweak ordinances, but to make housing available for the purpose it was designed for, to house people, not to make everything into a motel. I would support the expansion and flexibility of granny flats. I would go to the conservancy and ask them to free up lots that are, that are in the middle of developed residential neighborhoods, place appropriate restrictions so they can only be used for lower or middle-income use, and get those released. But those would be the first steps. Those would be the first steps. We've let this problem become too acute, and now we have to catch up.
Um, I actually serve on the same committee that Austin and Wendy sit on with Tahoe Prosperity Center's housing program. I think that that's a first step. You need to find out what's needed, and what we're finding is, is that height and density and parking are the biggest, um, deterrents to these developers, so we need to make those changes within our community. Um, I think the other thing is, is that our city and some of our agencies have a lot of these commodities that TRPA has defined, and they need to provide those to these developers as, as incentives. The city has tons of banked coverage, they have sewer units. The district, the South Tahoe Public Utility District, just cut their sewer fee connections in half. They have allowed the transfer of sewer units. So the city and the other agencies need to follow the lead of South Tahoe Public Utility District and allow those kinds of things. We need to give those incentives where we can, and we need to make those deterrents go away so that these projects can pencil out, so.
There are a few answers to affordable housing that I don't think have entirely been looked at. Tiny houses and mother-in-laws, those, yeah, they've been looked at, but they haven't been talked about very much, at least not to the general public. Not that I've heard, not that I've seen. If you were, take, take today, excuse me, take a look at manufactured housing. I'm not talking trailers, I'm not talking mobile homes, I'm talking actual manufactured housing. A lot of those houses over in Tahoe Verde Park, those are really nice houses, and they're affordable. If we could get rid of some of the places around here, like what's, uh, God, I can't think of the street names, right off Third Street there.
Gene.
Gene. No, the, the first one.
Barton.
Barton. Right on Barton, between Barton and, uh, is that Gene, the second one up there? There's a, there's lots of trailer homes there, lots of tr- actual trailer homes. You could hook up a van and drive away. We could get rid of stuff like that, and let's go with like what Clint Shu did up on Gene Street there. He's built some beautiful houses up there, and we can get more of that. That's affordable housing, you know, something that respectable, affordable housing. And get rid of some, get, get people out of living in motels.
So all of the above, as far as your question in regards to what the city can directly do? I agree with Hal Cole, it's about getting out of the way. Affordable housing isn't happening because it's not penciling out, it doesn't make sense to develop. How can we reduce our fees, streamline our permitting, work with STPUD who's already reduced their fees? Work with the school district to reduce their fees? Working with TRPA on their new program to get bonus units for affordable housing? How do we get out of the way to make it work? As a council member, I would advocate for smart housing projects, not only affordable, but workforce moderate across an entire range relating to the community college. You guys need housing, you need dorms, you're expanding, we're going to have a four-year university here before we know it. There's a nice seven-point-three-acre lot right next to the police department on Johnson Boulevard. That would make a great place for not only dorms and student housing, but multi-family, multi-family houses, tiny homes. We need to have that entire mix. How can the city play a role with Tahoe Prosperity Center and our partners to bring that together? And to address Austin's comment, I agree, height and density are needed, but the city could take actions today to do that. That's what TRPA's area plans exist for. We could create a new area plan that inc- that does the study and analyzes increased height and density in certain neighborhoods such as Al Tahoe and Harrison Avenue to allow for that. There are things we can do today that we are not doing that would put a dent in the housing issue. And then finally, it's also about jobs. Like I said, it doesn't matter how affordable housing is, if there's not the year-round, full-time, living wage jobs to make you afford the housing. So we need not only to develop the housing, get out of the way, but we need to support the economic development and the jobs.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree with more or less everything that's been said here today. I think that we do need to take this on headfirst. I think there's been a huge shift in, uh, our dynamic with the northern Nevada economy really booming over the last three to four years, and the fact that affordable housing was available in Carson City, uh, Gardnerville, and Mendon, but now people are moving to Carson City and Gardnerville, and they can get a job at Tesla, they can get a job at Amazon, uh, they can get a job down the hill that is paying better than the job in Tahoe. And so we're starting to see a major effect that I don't think we felt three to four years ago, and we really need to take this as one of the most primary issues. I believe, uh, through the allowable, uh, you know, to allow tiny homes and granny units is one of the things that I think we could do most immediate. Uh, tiny homes to be added to the back of your parcel, uh, would either, either generate revenue or have, if you're, if you're a business owner, you can have an employee live in the back. Uh, that, that would avail, make it available for somebody to possibly purchase a home because now their home has some income, uh, to it, uh, because the, the housing prices become very, uh, unobtainable for most locals. Uh, I do believe that there are some changes that need to happen at a city level that we have really made a block, as, as Hal said, we, we have got to get out of the way, and we have got to do what we can to work with other agencies like the school district to lower their fees, with stupid, to lower those fees, and then developers would be able to, uh, you know, build affordable housing. We should make Haveri that built the Whole Foods Development. They should have to build affordable housing to get the permit to build the Whole Foods Development. The gondola development should do the same thing.
Um, the next question is in regards to immigration, and it's going to start with candidate Sassa and work our way back to candidate Grego. Uh, the question is, what role do you feel like the city has in the immigration policy?
City doesn't have an immigration policy. What policy are you referring to?
The question that they have prepared for me was, does the city have a role in, in, to play in immigration policy? Oh, I think that as a student here, immigration?
Immigration.
Okay, um, I am a neutral party, so I don't want to cross any boundaries, but, um, as a student here, it's something that we vote on in student senate at the double S triple C, like the Dreamer Act and that kind of thing that directly pertains to our school and, um, the students that are involved here. And so when we have to vote on those type of things, I think maybe the question is your stance on that possibly.
Immigration is a national issue, not a local issue, and we don't have an immigration policy. We don't have any ICE staff here looking for illegal immigrants. Um, I think in our city, um, from what I've seen, um, there is no pressure on people to have to hide or worry about being arrested. Short of that, it's a national policy or an estate policy, and the city just doesn't get involved in immigration policy, so I'm not really sure how to answer the question.
Federal government doesn't care what our opinion is in Tahoe. We have a lot of issues we talk to them about all the time, so it is a federal issue, it's not a local issue. I employ a lot of Hispanic citizens that work for me, been with me for twenty-some years. Uh, I don't see a real big issue in our community, uh, and, and I agree with Austin, there's no, I don't see ICE coming in and doing raids on Nevada side or California side. So it is a national issue, and it is a serious one. DACA is a serious one, but we have no control over that. I don't care what we say, nothing's going to change, and that's unusual for government, from us. We don't want to change everything.
Disagree with both of my fellow council members on this. Um, immigration and DACA is a local issue. We have, um, a huge Hispanic population, many of them go to our local, like Tahoe Community College. I for one, um, lead a nonprofit called Tahoe Magic, and if any student that cannot pay their DACA fees and need to pay those fees so they can be educated, so they can be an educated part of our community, I'm absolutely all over that and do that on a personal basis. So, um, I mention that to you because when you do decide who you want on your council, I hope that you want someone that looks at your entire community, looks at them each as residents, looks at them each as people that should breathe their, reach their highest potential, and if they can reach their highest potential through DACA, then that's what I'm all about.
I just reiterating, we don't deal with too much federal law, but I'm in the construction business, and I don't think our construction business would survive without immigrants working in our, in our community. Uh, we don't have the impact as they do in Southern California because ninety-seven percent of our immigrants are coming from the Mexican border, and it's impacting Southern California. We're not impacted negatively, I think we're impacted positively, from my opinion, because by and large, there are people who are coming here, legal or illegal, happy to be here, they want to work hard, they want to have their kids have a better life, so, uh, when it comes down to it, I hope our city does take a, a light hand, and, and we, we honor the people that are here.
Um, yeah, I, I actually disagree. I do believe it's, uh, a local policy that can be set. As many people know, there's many sanctuary cities throughout the state of California. There, we're actually a sanctuary state, um, and I do think the, the fact is, we're all immigrants, and we all came to this country looking for a better way of life. Uh, and there is no way that we should, uh, support ICE or any federal agency walking into our community, ripping kids away from their parents and putting them in jail. And what we can do as a sanctuary city is we can say that our jail is not allowed to be used for ICE, and that's what a sanctuary city is doing. We can direct our police chief to not provide backup, uh, to these ICE raids to ensure, uh, that our community actually is protected. Uh, the fact is, a huge part of our community is a Hispanic population, uh, and they have come here to work here, uh, and, and honestly, they're very honest and, and a, a great part of our community, and we should do everything we can to protect them. And as the council, we absolutely can vote to become a sanctuary city, and we can absolutely direct our police chief that he's not allowed to use our jails, uh, for ICE raids. Uh, and I would support that because I think it is, it, it, the way that this administration on a federal level has dealt with this is wrong. It's a, it's a wrong on a humanitarian level, and it is not correct. Uh, and in California, if you look at the California history, uh, the Spanish were, were here way before any of us were here. For, for us to, to stand to them and tell them that they're actually an immigrant, as we're an immigrant, I think that's a very, uh, something that we should really think about, and I think that we should become a sanctuary city.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, your question is, maybe fits into the bigger context of how our city council is representing our community. If you look at the, the candidates sitting up here, and myself included, we're all white. Our, our representation at city council, planning commission, Parks and Right Commission, does not represent the true makeup of our community. We need Hispanic representation, we need Filipino representation, we need youth, we need all, all people represented that actually reflect the community makeup. As city council member, I will make it a priority to reach out to the community, not expect the community to come to us and try to make it to a nine AM city council meeting at the airport that's not on a bus route when you're working three jobs. It's not your job as a community member to make an effort to reach the city council and get your voice across. It's our job as city council members to represent the community, reach out, be available, and go above and beyond to understand all of the community issues and all the community concerns, including immigration.
We here in South Lake Tahoe, this, this is a huge melting pot. There are so many immigrants here, not just Hispanics, not just the Mexicans, the Latinos. We get people from New Zealand. I'm married to a New Zealander. I'm married to an immigrant, so yeah, I have, I kind of have my toes already dipped into this issue a little bit. I speak three different languages, two of them only passively, but I, I agree, we need to embrace the immigrant population that we have here in South Lake Tahoe. We also need to embrace our immigrant visitors. I've met people from just about every country in the world, right here in South Lake Tahoe. We, we are a world, we are known worldwide. Everybody in the world has, in one way or another, heard of South Lake Tahoe, and a lot of people do come here, so we need to embrace that immigrant population. Wherever they're from, whether they're Hispanic, or German, or Russian, or Chinese, or Japanese, we need to welcome them in and show them that we're here to help them enjoy life a little bit, like we all do.
Well, I'm actually a student here at Lake Tahoe Community College. Well, I'm actually a student here at Lake Tahoe Community College. I am a proud student, and I, um, actually have classes with some of the wonderful young people here, and, um, some of them have had this conversation with me. Um, I am the proud stepdaughter of a Mexican immigrant, and have been since I was nine years old. My sister is half-Mexican. Um, however, I do believe with some of the other council members, I don't think that this is a city issue. I think it's more of a county or state or even national issue. Um, that being said, I don't think that, um, we should do something one way or the other. I think that we should include everyone. Um, one of the things, and I'm sort of gonna take maybe a little bit of wind out of what Bruce might say, he, he talked about his father being an immigrant, and bringing him to, to meetings, and bringing him and getting him involved, and I just love that about, about his story. And I know that my stepfather really encouraged me always to get involved in my community and be who I am, and it had nothing to do with how I was raised or who I was. So, I encourage those students to continue to get involved and to, uh, not let that hinder them in any way.
It doesn't make a difference the color of skin. My father came to this country as, as an illegal alien. He jumped ship in South Carolina and came to this country illegally, and eventually got his, his citizenship ten years later. I'm first-generation American. I saw how, one step at a time, you get up. My father did bring me to a lot of council meetings and participated in the process. And we just have to make sure that the opportunity is available for anybody else. Immigrants are the strength of our country, but they have to find their way, and we have to make the opportunities available to them. That's how it works.
All right, we are going to start with closing statements. Uh, we've increased your closing statements to two minutes, thought of, for each person. We're gonna start with, uh, candidate Jared, and then go back, and then begin with, it's two minutes. There will be a thirty-second warning as well.
We've presented a lot of issues tonight. We've discussed a lot of things, and a lot of stuff has been presented to the voting people of the city. I'm saying, I'm talking to the voters out there right now, saying, "I'm here to listen to you." The city council, they, a lot of times, they don't seem to be listening, they don't seem to be paying attention to what the voters and the citizens of the city have to say. They have a public comment period. You get a couple minutes, and the city council doesn't, they're, they do not respond to that. They're not supposed to respond to that. So, unless you pull them aside and talk to them privately, you don't get to really talk to the council as a whole and address the issues. I'm here to listen to you, and I'm here to bring what the people and the voters and the citizens of the city, I'm here to bring that to the forefront. So I respectfully ask for your vote, November sixth. Thank you very much.
Again, I was born and raised in this community. I'm, I'm running for city council because I love it. In the last five years, I've been heavily involved. Yes, I work at TRPA, but who better to serve on city council than someone that actually understands what TRPA is, uh, TA, TRPA is and what TRPA does? If you, uh, someone wise once said, "If you don't have a conflict of interest in this town, you haven't been living here long enough." Uh, it's about imagining not what we wanna accomplish in the next two years or four years, or what the current pressing matter is. We need leadership and new vision to look ten, fifteen, a hundred years forward into the future. By 2100, we're predicted to not receive snow anymore. What will our economy look like when heavenly doesn't get snow, when Sierra doesn't get snow? How will our economy survive when we have extended drought periods and people can't vote or go to the beach? We are at a critical point in our history where we must act now to secure our future, for fu, uh, to secure our future for the kids we're raising here. I was lucky enough to be able to be born and raised here, go away to school, and come back and have a full-time job, and have the ability to be engaged and be a voice for the community. That is why I'm ready for city council. I wanna afford that opportunity for everyone, new, old, local, just moved here a week ago. We need new ideas, new leadership, that are willing to put theirself out there and fight for those bright ideas and fight for the people of the community. Um, and if you wanna learn more about my campaign, you can go to MiddlebrookForCouncil.com.
Um, I could talk about how I'm different from all the other candidates. Um, you've seen that during the questions, though. I'm different from the other candidates, but I'm gonna tell you how I'm gonna get along with them, because in a few weeks, three of us are going to start spending a lot of time together. Um, I'm a woman, so I know how to argue. All you have to do is ask my husband about that. Um, but I've attempted through this process to find common ground, and I found common ground with every single person up here. I have a relationship, either personal or business, with every single person here. I know these people, I've spent time with these people, and I can tell you, I pledge to you that I will spend the next four years getting along with these people, because I like them. I've found something to like about every single person here. And we may disagree, but I promise you that I won't do that disagreeably. So, thank you and vote for me, November sixth.
Uh, yeah, so I moved to Tahoe when I was seventeen years old, uh, twenty years ago, and, you know, I've, I've basically brought myself up into the world through this town, and, and I, you know, really have a, a real desire to see change that is from an integral, uh, community-minded and, uh, involved council. Uh, uh, you know, I believe that, uh, you know, there is interest that possibly are, are involved in the council currently that don't serve the best of our community and that don't have the highest levels of integrity. Uh, and I think that shows in, in some of the actions and votes that have been made through the past years. Uh, I, I will be a council member that is approachable, that is available, uh, and somebody that you can actually relate with, and, and you can find that middle ground with. Uh, I agree with Tamara that really our most important and, and the most responsible thing we can do as a council is to get to know each other, know that we're gonna disagree, know that we're gonna, you know, continuously debate, but that's how we get to what's best for the community. Uh, we, we've really got to question the staff, and we've really got to get engaged, uh, with the ongoings in the state, you know, in the city, and not just meet every first and third Tuesday, uh, and vote to pass what the, the staff would like us to pass. So, I, I will be that council member that has integrity. Uh, I really feel that, uh, you know, coming from my background of owning businesses, uh, the cannabis background, the challenges that I have had to endure over the past decade, give me an experience that is, uh, I, I believe, kind of unique, and, and something that, with the challenges of a city, uh, could really be brought my perspective, could be a great perspective, uh, to the council. Um, I, I think that as the council members, our, our real job is to have the integrity, and I do think that we, uh, have seen a lack of that. I think, you know, closing Fire Station Two and voting to increase development services by 1.6 million, uh, while you close a fire station, shows that lack of integrity that really, really needs to be. Uh, public safety and the safety of our community should be the top priority, not redevelopment.
Hi, you know, I've lived in this city for fifty-one years now, and I've been an attorney for thirty-eight years, helping citizens in our community. And as an attorney, you learn about duty, and did the, did the defendant have a duty to, to the plaintiff, to keep the plaintiff safe? Well, the problem with government and the people you elect is they forget who they have the duty to. My duty is to the voters and the people of this community, not to the city of South Lake Tahoe. That's a different obligation. My priority is to represent you, not to represent the city, and that's where the confusion lies. Where does the duty lie? You know, people wanna feel safe with good fire and police. They wanna drive on our roads with no potholes. They want a home that they can afford. They don't wanna see taxes continually increased and fees increased. Those are my objectives if I get elected. Those are be my focuses, but my duty will be to you.
Candidate Cole.
Uh, this has been a long and very diverse debate. I'm a little disappointed and saddened. Two of the most important things to me are our city budget and our roads. And, and I, I'm gonna try to do in two minutes what I wanted to do for a long time. First of all, we've been talking about roads ever since I've been a young man. I've been here sixty years. It's gonna cost $3 million a year for twenty years, every year, to get these roads to what's considered good, good condition. Every year we don't put money in those roads, that number gets bigger and bigger. I've heard people say, "Oh, get out of our budget." Let me talk about our budget just for a minute. We have a $40 million revenue general fund budget. Three-quarters is police and fire. In 2019, we expect maybe to have 800,000 in surplus. In 2020, we're gonna have a 300,000 deficit. That deficit's gonna grow year after year after year. And this budget is based on, not, forget, if we'd put nine firemen in Station Number Two, that's another million and a half. Uh, in five years, our PERS, our retirement's gonna be another $5 million. If VHRs are restricted, our TOT's gonna go down. If we have another economic downturn, which I've lived through three of them, our revenue's gonna go down. We do not have enough money in our budget to sustain it the way it is now. We have gotta focus on, you talk about long-term planning. We can't do any of the stuff we've talked about if we don't have any money in our budget. I have a proposal, how we're gonna fund our roads. It's on my website. I, I've ad nauseam talked about it. I'm, if nothing else, I wanted to spend the next few years to get a sustainable revenue source to fix our roads. And all these other subjects can come and go, and we can find policies and change policies, but we can't find money. And so, our, our budget, I hope this council, whoever the five are gonna be sitting there, are gonna take a long-term look at our long-term budget, 'cause we're in trouble.
Before you start the clock, I would just like to thank the chamber for putting this on today, and I would also like to apologize to the audience for the fast speaking up here. When you're sitting up here, it sort of feels like speed dating with the two minutes and the clock ticking. Um, so, no, I'm just starting to clock. I believe in diversity on city council, and I believe that you must have several council members who have experience, because in a city, like in life, experience matters. I have served four years in city council, three years on the TRPA governing board, four years on the TTD board, four years on the recreation JPA, and I have twenty years' experience working in and managing multimillion-dollar budgets and organizations. In addition, I have worked in the local ski, hospitality, gaming, and dining industries, and have a deep understanding of our number-one industry, tourism. I am also an avid skier, hiker, mountainin', roadbiker, and golf-er, with a very good understanding of our second-most important industry, which is recreation. I am a realist and always look at both sides of an issue before making a decision. To steal a quote from Bill Crawford, "I do not go along to get along." But I always strive for compromise and solutions when an issue splits our city. I always put locals first and try to make decisions that are best not for one group, but for the general welfare of our entire community. I own no businesses or real estate beyond my home, and thus have no conflicts of interest. I will never need to recuse myself from the important issues, be it VHRs, cannabis, housing, streets, or redevelopment. Finally, I have the time and desire to give my all to the city. Many years ago, I asked a former mayor how much time was required to serve on council. He told me council is little or as much as you want it to be. Today, and after serving for four years, I find that statement to be weak. My experience has taught me that this position is twenty to twenty-five hours per week, and I personally want council members with the time and desire to serve our city, who wants a teammate not committed to making the city the best it can be? You can be assured that I am committed and passionate about our future, and will put the time and effort in, and I ask for your support in my reelection bid to continue the good work we've done over the last four years.
First of all, I wanna thank Lisa Mayloff for all the donations she's given back to our community. She is an angel in this community college, uh, the hospital, nonprofits. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Bob Mayloff, and I've known them, both of them, for many, many years, and they've done a great job. I have been on your council for many years, and the reason I get reelected is I do what I tell you I'm gonna do, and I've been about economic development, making this town a better place to live. It took me twelve years to lobby Caltrans to get them to spend $43 million on Highway Fifty at the Y. Yeah, the traffic's a pain, and you know what. I drove through it twice today. But I think when you see the roads clear, it's beautiful down there now. We got curves, repaved roads, we got, uh, water quality. Town looks good, and it's starting to look better. We still got more to do. I ask for your support. By the way, I'm available every day except Sunday at Nicky's Chat Cafe, 10:30, 11:30 for coffee, and people come in, we have a community table there, uh, and you're welcome, and I'll buy the coffee. So I ask for your vote, November sixth. I'm proven, I'm tested, and I do what I say I'm gonna do. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, again, and, um, I also wanna thank the chamber for bringing this on. It really is, um, it's so good to see all the candidates and hear the diverse points of view. Um, I just wanna share with you that, um, I have always been about our community. For the last forty-five years, I've been about this community. Four terms on the Lake Tahoe Unified School District, thirteen years as your president on the Lake Tahoe Unified School District. I care about education. I also care about our community and founded, helped co-found, co-founded, uh, founded Tahoe Magic, founded, um, the Tahoe Women's Community Fund, all of these, caring about our community. I bring that same